Call meeting to order. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the city we live in. Guide us this evening with make up decisions. Christ's Prayer.
Amen.
Okay, this is a special call meeting of the Noonan City Council, August the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty in the evening. The purpose of this meeting is to hold a public hearing, the three of, the third of three required meetings on the two thousand and twenty-four millage rate. And also, the second item of business is the consideration of an ordinance to set the millage rate for two thousand and twenty-four. If you're a property owner in the city of Noonan and you have comment, you'll have an opportunity to do that tonight. We're not going to have a cap on the time, the total amount of time, but as an individual, you'll have two minutes to speak during the public hearing. It all open in just a minute. During that time, if you ask a question, the two-minute clock will stop. Mr. Cletus or others will answer your question, or attempt to, and then, at that point, the clock will start again. So you won't be penalized if we're answering questions during your two minutes. We appreciate everybody being here this evening. Want to let you know that the empty seat, Councilman Thomason, is out of town, but he is on a phone call. Mr. Councilman Thomason, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Thank you.
All right, great. Glad to know you're there. Safe travels. So, I'm going to go ahead and get started with the public hearing. This, by the way, is not a school board meeting, it's not a county commissioner meeting, it's not the Board of Assessors meeting. If you have an issue or comments about any of those three entities, this is not the forum to bring those comments forward, because we, we don't have anything to do with what they do, especially the tax assessor. We use the tax assessors from the county, we use their information on our tax assessments. So, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time and call on Mr. Phillips for his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of our community. Thank you for being here tonight. As you said, Councilman Thomason isn't here tonight. I do want to note for the record that the statute allows an elected official to call in via video or teleconference up to two times in one calendar year. So this is Councilman Thomason's first call in. Just wanted to note that.
Appreciate that.
Again, as Mayor Brady said, this is our third and final public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-four millage rate. After the conclusion of the public hearing and comment from the citizens, this, this body will consider an ordinance to adopt the millage rate so that we can get the millage rate certification over to the Tax Commissioner. I do want to start by saying, and I've said this in all three, a copy of this particular presentation. There's about thirty-four pages in the presentation. I'm not going through thirty-four pages, but the entire presentation is available on our website at noonin.gaa.gov. If you go to the news link, you'll see a link that has a notice of a tax increase, and this exact presentation is on there. I'll also use the, the presentation to help answer any questions if it's related to a question where we have data in the presentation. Real quick, we are here because of the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. This particular bill went into law on January twentieth, so here we are in our twenty-fourth year of utilizing this process. Basically, what the process says is if a taxing authority is going to adopt any millage rate that is not the rollback rate, and I will explain a rollback rate to you later, we must hold these three series of public hearings, we must provide a, a notice to the paper and a press release. And those three items have been, have been done. Another FYI that we like to explain, and sometimes, you know, we talk in government terms, and sometimes you may not know what a millage rate is. Well, one mill is a dollar for every one thousand dollar that your property is assessed. And in Georgia, you're taxed on forty percent of your property valuation. So, for example, if you have a four hundred thousand dollar piece of property, forty percent of that is a hundred and sixty. So you are assessed that millage rate on a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of your property, not the four hundred thousand dollars. Again, here we are, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six thirty. It is our third and final public hearing. You see, per the statute, one of the three public hearings must be held between the hours of six PM and seven PM, and here we are. Two of the public hearings which we're doing today can be held on the same day, provided the first one starts before noon, and our first one this morning was at eleven thirty AM. I'm going to jump right in, bullet points, and this is the question everyone's here for, is why. I've got a lot of slides and data that can further explain these, but I won't go through slides, and each will, will reserve as much time for our, for our members of the, the community to ask questions and participate. But obviously, the first point is to balance the budget. I do have some data. We've been doing some budget performance to show how we would balance the budget with the three point one-two, how we will have a budget shortfall if we take the rollback rate, and I will show you some of that data in, in a minute. I'll also show you in a minute how this particular body has continually taken a rollback rate. For the eleven of the past thirteen years, the Mayor and Noonan City Council has adopted a rollback rate, and there is a cumulative effect of, of doing such. Now, it's, it's good practice. I know this is what this body would love to be doing. You'd probably rather be doing that now as opposed to having these notices of an increase, but it does have a cumulative effect. It's no secret, it was in the, in the time period that we did have a loss of a large commercial taxpayer from the digest, the Cancer Center. Again, I've said it many times, we value the Cancer Center. They brought a lot of value, they brought a lot of investments and jobs and healthcare to a serious illness to our community. It's just that they were bought out by a nonprofit entity. Their, their loss is about eight hundred thousand dollars when you combine what they were paying in property taxes and their occupational tax certificate. This body also, over the last couple of years, has made a tremendous investment in our employees in terms of their salaries and their benefits. We sat here about a year ago and deliberately made a decision to invest in public safety. At that time, we had about fifteen vacancies in our police department, and I announced last week, as we sat here in our first public hearing, how we currently have no vacancies in either police or fire. Those investments are paying off, but those investments do cost. Over the years, we've also had a, as our economy has flourished, we have also been able to rely upon our increasing sales tax. Sales tax several years ago was pretty equal to the revenue created by property taxes in our budget. But as we said in the two thousand and twenty-four budget, we're going to collect over twelve point four million dollars in sales tax and roughly seven million dollars in, in property tax. So you can see that we've actually shifted that responsibility to sales tax over the years, which we enjoy that from the standpoint that a lot of the shoppers who are coming into our community, spending their sales tax dollars, aren't property owners, so therefore they're reducing in the burden of our property owners, and we enjoy that. The problem with us is the inflation's hit, and a lot of us have stopped some of our spending, controlled some of our spending, lessened some of our spending, and we've actually seen that in our collections. In July, we saw a seven and a half percent decline in our loss collections. Up until that point, it, it had been in a positive. We still have six more months of collections for this particular budget year, and sometimes it's hard to predict what that's going to do. We do know for a fact that entering into the two thousand and twenty-five budget year, we're going to see a decrease in our distribution percentage. Every ten years, we must negotiate a new sales tax certificate with Coheed County and the other cities in Coheed County, and we, two years ago, we entered into agreement that slightly reduced our distribution agreement, which, our distribution percentage, which goes into effect in January. We're projecting that we'll need to see an increase in the economy in about three and a half percent to be able to equal net zero growth in sales tax for next year. Inflationary expenses, I don't think any of us, you know, have to question that one. I think everyone of us, whether it's at home or your workforce, has, has seen the increase in your inflationary expenses. Local government is actually, we're not exempt from, from that either, whether it's going to be in purchasing police cars, or whether it's maintaining cars, whether it's in our communication light items, whether it's in, in basic office supplies. I think I saw in a percentage format, our highest percentage was actually pine straw. So, we, we've been subject to inflationary expenses, just like everyone else. Also, meeting and providing high, high levels of service and expectations, that's one thing that, you know, we really pride ourselves on, is to try to provide that service, you know. For example, we had a little storm that hit in downtown Noonan late Saturday night. You know, today you drive by, we, we, we've got it cleaned up, we got downtown cleaned up. So those are the type of services that we try to, try to provide, and it, and it costs money to do such. Here, I want to talk a little bit about balancing the current budget. In the graph, you see the particular line item of property tax revenue. On the left is the rollback millage rate of two point five nine, and you'll see down about two thousand and twenty-four tax budget for that line item, seven point four. If we take the rollback rate, we're estimating about a one point two million dollar deficit in that line item. If the three point one-two rate is approved by this body, we'll just slightly exceed revenue collections or the budget. We typically collect about ninety-five percent of taxes that are billed. We have an agreement with the Tax Commissioner to collect for us, so a ninety-six, ninety-five percent number is what we use, and that, and that is a really strong number. A lot of governments will only use about a ninety percent number. Down at the bottom, I made a comment, and I've actually, Ms. Kelsey and staff, we've been doing, digging line item by line item, looking and trying to project where we're going to finish up two thousand and twenty-four calendar year budget. As we're setting this millage rate, here's where it gets a little complicated. We're selling a mill, millage rate for a budget that we started in January of two thousand and twenty-four, so we're seven and a half months through that budget. I am projecting that if we adopted the rollback rate, our entire revenue over expenses is going to be about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars short. I've tried to roll that into a projection next year, as we've about ready to start our two thousand and twenty-five budget process, that show that we will have some struggles with balancing the budget next year at that rollback rate. And that's including some cost-cutting provisions, lending some of our travel training, reducing some of our communications costs. I think at this point in time, I think I'm not, pretty much staff is not going to be requesting any employees for next year, so we are going to implement some cost control items next year, but we could still struggle to meet that budget. Here's the graph that shows the history of rolling back the millage rate. Just pay attention to the orange line. You see the orange trend line is heading down. In two thousand and twelve, this body adopted a, a millage rate of four point three nine, and you can see how it's trended down, especially these last few years. In, in two thousand and twenty, we were at three point six four, and you can see we've had some large decreases here. And what those decreases are directly attributed to are the reassessments. The higher the reassessments are, the larger that rollback rate. And this, this body's been good stewards of the tax dollar, and they have adopted that rollback rate, but it's getting to the point now where the rate is getting so low, and we had, like I said, the Cancer Center removed from the tax digest about a hundred million dollars. The two thousand and twenty-four rollback rate creates a negative in terms of taxes levy compared to prior year, which is a very unusual situation. But yeah, eleven of the past thirteen years, the body is again taking the rollback. Again, I talked about the cumulative effect, not saying that we would have held the, the rate the same, but in theory, if we were have held the same rate from four point three nine over these past thirteen years, it would be a difference of four point three million dollars. So there is a cumulative effect that happens there. Like I said, I got a lot of other slides, but this is going to be the slide I end on before we start the public hearing. Just what is the impact? This is the city of Noonan portion of the tax bill only. This is not the Coheed County or the school system. And I got several examples here. We'll talk about the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, since that's the closest to the average valuation in the city of Noonan, and it is slightly over three fifty. But for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, the annual difference is seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. If you want to extrapolate that out to any other price home, it equals about twenty-one thousand per every one hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. So if someone had a million dollar home, it'd be a two hundred and ten dollar difference. Think that is all I have. Like I said, I got other slides, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anything from Council before public comment?
Yes, sir.
Anyone? Okay. This is your opportunity, thank you, Mr. Phillips. This is your opportunity to come forward and speak. Again, you've got a two-minute time limit, and if you'll state your name and your address, please, we would appreciate that very much. So, I don't know who's first. We're not going by the list, but, okay, sir, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening. My name's Chris Toomey, three six two Stillwood Drive. As you're painfully aware, and most of the rest of us, I think in this world, things don't go down in cost, they go up, and everybody is fighting to try and afford how to pay the bills. Not everybody has the luxury of raising their fees or charging higher prices. We have employers that we have to appease, and right now, anything above five percent is doing phenomenal as far as a yearly increase. So, please take that into consideration, that when you're hitting us with such a large increase, county is, school board, everybody wants to increase, and I, I get why, but consider the impact it has on those of us that don't have the luxury of being able to earn more money or get more money somehow. What did, and I, I'm sorry if I missed this in the presentation if it was there. What's the net impact of all the assessment increases?
Yeah, great question, sir. Ms. Shea, this is going to be a really small slide, and I'm going to walk you through it and show you. If you would go to slide twelve, please. I'm going to walk you through it. Trust, trust me, I can't see it either. All right. This second column, it's called the reassessment of existing real property. This column is the cumulative net effect of every property in the city of Noonan that has been reassessed. So, if, commercial, residential, it doesn't matter. So for two thousand and twenty-four, we had a total of a hundred and forty-three million dollars worth of reassessments added to our tax digest. That reassessment directly, as you see here, determines the rollback rate. The higher that number, the higher the rollback rate, thus producing a lower millage rate.
So the rollback rate is essentially a decrease?
It is a decrease. That is correct, sir. But what's an anomaly on this particular digest is the third column. We normally don't see reds. Normally, that's new growth. Oh, go back to that slide, I'm sorry. That was fast, wasn't it? But see, the negative this year was just the one-time removal of the Cancer Center. Like I said, the Cancer Center was about a hundred million dollars worth of assessed value that got removed. Normally, in that column, we'll see a fifty, forty to forty, fifty million dollar increase. We saw a sixty million dollar decrease. So by taking the rollback with the decrease, it put us in a little bit of a negative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you factor in somehow new business coming into town? All the new building permits and businesses that are slated open, you know, six months to a year from now?
We, we certainly do. We, we track permits. Mr. Cravers over the permit department, he can probably explain exactly how it works. But it takes a little bit to get on a digest, because the digest is as of January one. So if a business opens up in, let's say, February, we won't see it on the digest until the following year. So there's a, there is a delay that occurs.
So it's not a cost bogey or something that gets included in that?
But good question, good question.
And you did touch on a bit, the, kind of looking at some cuts and everything, and I have no, no desire to see any cuts for law enforcement or firefighters. In fact, I think they're grossly underpaid. I used to be a police officer in another state, couldn't pay me enough to do it today, and they deserve every penny. But, you know, it just seems like, I think there was a slide that you didn't show, but it was in the package, if I remember correctly, that the average pay increase is ten percent?
That was for last year. If you will go to slide twenty.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah. There were two years. Obviously, we have what was a kind of a standard, up until two thousand and twenty, the standard pay raises had ranged from three and a half to five percent annually, and that's what happened in two thousand and twenty. Two thousand and twenty, COVID happened. When we put our budget together, we were really, really, really scared of the economy and what may happen. So you can see going into that budget year, we, we gave no pay raise. We added no employees. Well, that really got us behind. We had people not wanting to return. We were starting to create markets, we starting to see other local governments that were making big swings at public safety. So we also made a big swing in two thousand and twenty-two. Can't maintain that number. So we came back down to three and a half percent in twenty-three. Well, then the same thing happened. We started seeing agencies, you know, starting to raise prices, and it was almost a recruiting battle and a bidding battle for employees. So that's where in two thousand and twenty-four, we had about a ten and a half percent overall. I'm projecting that in some of the modeling that we're doing next year in the budget, three percent cola, no employees, so it's going to come back down to.
So somewhere around three percent, three and a half?
Yeah, somewhere around three percent is kind of what we're modeling right now.
I thought it was kind of setting a upward trend overall, then. And you're quite painfully aware, since we all live in the county, I assume, of all the other increases. And again, I asked, you know, please keep in mind that it's starting to ask a lot. If it were, were normal times, probably wouldn't be much of an issue, but with everything hitting all at once, it gets very, very painful on it. Sorry, my screen just went. And then, kind of an unrelated question. I'm sadly noticing that you guys have hidden the American flag, and that is very disturbing, that it should not be hidden. It should be with everybody, all the other flags, my personal opinion.
I would agree.
Thank you.
Sadly, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I have no idea why it's back there.
We appreciate your comments, and especially that last observation, it will be remedied.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, next speaker. Anyone else?
I wasn't next, but nobody standing up.
No, no, we're not going by the agenda sign, and you'd be last.
Makes sense. I'm Gary Martin, thirty-nine Jackson Street. The quick comment, that's the Noonan's Indianapolis five hundred. And we'd love at some point to see the enforcement of speed limits there, and I'll leave it at that, because we'll, we'll deal with that more through the community. Quick question for you, Cletus. You made a comment today that, maybe I misunderstood it, regarding the impact to the digest for the Cancer Center. Losing that, you said it's a one-time effect. Explain to me that, what you said, because my limited mind says that's a recurring deficit. It's not a one-time effect.
It, it is recurring because it never returns, correct?
That's what I was.
I get that. What I'm saying is, once we capture it into a budget process, I don't have to capture the negative again the following year. We can kind of reset.
But you don't replace that.
We don't, we won't.
So you do one of, you do one of two things. You raise the assessments and you raise the tax, the millage rates to make up for that somehow. That's all I'm saying. Am I wrong about that? Because you can't replace a million dollars without doing something.
Yeah, as the mayor said, not the assessments. We don't do the assessments.
I know that, that's, I understand that part.
Again, when, going back to the why column, why are we proposing or I'm recommending a three point one-two? That is one of the factors.
Yeah. And I realize that you said also, which I wasn't aware of, seventy-eight percent of your budget relates to manpower, and that's a pretty high number, and I, I, you know, that's a challenge. What, another quick question for you on, with regard to the city tax rate increase, what's the overall increase that you project, looking at the digest? And, and so you've got an increased number in there somewhere, maybe I missed it, for, for what's going to happen? It would be revenue increase, I guess. Is that, is that a twenty percent number? Is that a fifteen percent number?
Just inside the property tax line item or overall?
No, not over, well, the Noonan City tax.
Well, inside the, the property line, if you would go back to the budget, slide five, I think this is the best. You, you basically have, it's a one point two million dollar difference between the rollback rate and the proposed three point one-two.
Mr. Phillips, I can interrupt you, that's the rollback rate. Our current right, millage rate is not to, is not the two.
Were you talking collections or millage rate?
Collections.
Right, okay.
It can be that millage rate, I can look and I saw that, but I wasn't.
Yeah, 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 for collections, if you see here under, let's go to the proposed three point one-two. We would bill seven point eight nine million dollars, that's what would be billed. We use a ninety-five percent collection rate, so we're saying the estimated collection is seven point four million dollars. When I compare that to the rollback rate, it is basically a one point two, one point two five million dollar difference.
Okay. I could probably ask a few more, but let's let other people do it. I just want to say one thing, and that is that, that it's, get echoed by everyone that's here. These kind of increases all across, right here, are very difficult for people who are on fixed incomes particularly, and there's a lot of those folks throughout this whole community that are having to, and, and, you know, we see, we see assessments, we see everything else that's going on, and I know you don't do the assessments, but I'm just saying, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, there has to be some relief here, because we don't see these kinds of increases, either in salaries or anything that we're doing, that allows us to make up these kinds of differences. And it's hurting people. We're already hurting in this community, as well as others. Beautiful community, I love this place, but it's tough, and we'd ask you to take, you know, take that into consideration. We could sit here and go all day over the numbers, but just asking you, consider it, consider the reducing and not going as far as you've gone. That's, that's hurtful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other speakers? Thank you. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Speaking on behalf of my mom again, for eleven Camden Way within city, city limits. I spoke last week and asked you guys to look under the rock to see where you can make cuts. Have you been able to look across where you can make cuts?
Mr. Phillips?
Just like us.
Yeah, we, we've been line item by line item, and what we're showing, if you take a two point five rollback rate, we are basically with six months of collections of sales tax to be determined, and stills five months of health insurance claims to, to be unknown. We're basically at a break-even point, revenue and expenses. And that is with a lot of reductions, asking staff to, to, to stop their overtime expenditures, to, to monitor their travel, to stop the non-purchased capital equipment. We're basically at a break-even. And obviously, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar healthcare claim can happen at, at any time, so that's, that's, that's basically where, where you're at with the decision you have to make.
For those of you don't realize, we're self-insured on health insurance. Our premiums got so out of control several years ago that we went to self-insured on health insurance.
And it's been positive.
So, a large claim would be devastating. Go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
That, that's all I have.
Okay.
So what was your highest, I guess, what was your biggest expense out of all the things that are mandatory, necessary to run the city?
Well, the biggest expenses we have, obviously, is, is personnel. Like, like I said in the slide, and Mr. Martin referred to, we're seventy-eight percent personnel, and, you know, last year when we were running at, you know, vacancies at fifteen percent, you know, we were having savings unfortunately because we had vacancies, but yet it was affecting service. But this year, we're, we're pretty much fully staffed, so payroll is, is, is meeting budget. Unless we ask, you know, we reduce workforce, there's really not a lot of cuts to be made the remainder of the year that are significant with seventy-eight percent of our budget people.
What's payroll one cycle?
Total payroll for the year is, what, nineteen million? So, real quick, what, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what I got in my mind. Actually, over seven hundred thousand is a payroll cycle every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
And how long have you known that CTC A is converting to City of Hope, and we're going to lose this amount? And how have you been preparing for that?
We learned when they came in and renewed their occupational tax renewal in February.
Of this year?
But they've been transitioned since two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three?
I don't know when that was. Do you remember?
That is correct. I'll just, I'll just say it. We asked, that we met with the executive leadership staff to ask to keep us abreast of the change in the process, and we were formally, we'd get updates, and we learned when they renewed their occupational tax certificate.
We communicated with them and to do what Mr. Phillips just said, to keep us updated on when they were going to file their papers and do the things they needed to do to convert. We never heard from them until they came in and said it's done.
So, all of- So all over the United States, CTC A converted to City of Hope, and they just didn't tell you until this year when they filed?
I don't know what they did in other places. I know what they did in Newnan, Georgia.
Okay. But you were aware because they're major, like only seven centers in all of US?
Yes, we were aware of that.
But they, they just blinded you?
That's your comment online.
I mean, we could have not rolled it back last year and been prepared for it, and they would have had a more surplus in there, and you wouldn't have a big increase this year, but you'd have had it last year.
And third, last question. Are you looking under the rock of all these developers that are getting tax breaks within the city of Noonan and perhaps reassessing that to roll it towards them so we can finish out the budget with the great 2024 with firemen getting their pay, policemen, we're getting service, and also fire, ambulances and EMS getting their funded? Because obviously, when we've gone to the hospital, there's always been shortage. I was just trying to figure out, making sure that a lot of people are coming in, we're getting a lot of developments, a lot of things going on, but we're now able to fund the necessities that we are here for, for about 15 years, my mom.
There are currently no tax abatements. There have been two tax abatements issued in the 24 years that I've been with the city of Noonan, and one was Cancer Treatment Centers of America, and obviously, it's out. And the second one was Health Health Rehabilitation, and that one has certainly expired as well. So there are currently no tax abatements active.
So also talk about impact fees, please.
Yes, we certainly charge impact fees to developers, whether it be a single-family home, whether it be an apartment complex, any, any form of new construction that is tapping into our system. They pay a sewer impact fee, they pay a fire impact fee, they pay a recreation impact fee, and a transportation impact fee.
So they help to build the roads and upkeep it for the amount of time that the development is there, before, after, during?
The impact fee is designed to mitigate the impact of that particular development. The state law will not allow us to utilize an impact fee to remedy existing level of services. So the impact fee is designed to mitigate the impacts generated from that particular development or building.
The city of Noonan does not build roads for developers. We don't do that.
But some of the trucks that go in and out of developments do impact the roads that we travel on.
Obviously.
Yeah. So we would have to fork it out of, you know, us for the continuance and, you know, anything damaging-wise that happens, you know, even the emergency lanes, the paint, all of that, cracks, potholes, all of that.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Time's up. Next speaker, please. Anyone else? If you've got a question, we'll ask a question. You'll come forward, answer a question.
Sorry, I forgot one. Actually, it was on this chart here, you have a budget surplus. What is the reserve for the city that all the surplus has been going into?
Yeah, that's a good question. The city of Noonan has traditionally been very conservative in our budgeting practices, and I'm not going to deny that. Historically, the city of Noonan has maintained close to 100, 105% reserve for many, many years. But I can tell you that that practice has changed a lot over the last couple of years. We actually got our audited financials for 2023, and we actually lost reserves. I'm projecting this year about another $2 million loss in reserves because of the commitment this body made to do some paving. So we're projected to end this particular 2024 with about 67% in fund balance, which is certainly down from the 100, 105% that this body has held traditionally. Now, that being said, there's certainly value in fund balance. Fund balance allows us to be debt-free, which we certainly are at this point in time. Fund balance allows us to respond like we did in 2021 to the tornado. We responded without any worries whether or not we were going to get FEMA reimbursement. We did get FEMA reimbursement for about 92 and 1/2%, but we did not get 100% reimbursement. I've heard comments that we made money off the tornado, but we did not. I've also heard some comments that, you know, we used ARPA money to establish positions and give pay raises that we can no longer maintain, and that is not the case either. So, yeah, we're sitting here projected to end the year with about 67% of fund balance.
So it's possible to, if you come up with a midpoint or something, to tap into that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Glenna Stapleton, 3502 Commonwealth Circle. I really don't have a lot of questions. I do, on what the gentleman here had talked about, the reserve. I left my paperwork at home, so I'm sort of being quiet. But I had a lot of info on the reserve, and it just didn't come up with what was being said. But the only thing I ask is that you to consider all the people out there, esp, you know, nobody wants a tax raise. Nobody in this room does. But there are people that don't just have county, but you have city and county, and that just puts more of a burden on people that are already stretched to the limits. So I would hate to lose my home for that reason.
Mr. Phillips, appreciate your comments. Anyone else who'll come forward, please?
This lady over here had mentioned some, or you had, she had asked a question about,
you'll state your name.
Alicia Baldwin. Alicia Baldwin. She had mentioned something about when the developments are made and all the tractors and trucks are tearing up the roads, and you had said, you had mentioned that the prices are set. Is that correct? The fees are set for the developers?
The impact fee for a residential unit is a set fee.
Why is that not increasing versus the people that have been established here?
Well, it's very complicated how that fee is determined. There's a methodology that predicts, estimates growth, therefore, the number of units, and then estimates the type of construction projects that would be needed to remedy the impact of the growth. Again, you got to remember, we can't improve existing level of service with impact fees. The law just simply won't allow us. And that is how the number is arranged. It's units expected, basically divided by the price of the projects. And it has been a couple of years. So again, I think I mentioned in the work session at the public hearing at 11:30 today that staff's going to ask council to look at the fee schedule. So maybe that's another opportunity, we look at updating that. But it's a very complicated, usually, most cities will use a consultant to try to get, to develop their impact fee number. It's so complicated to make certain it's compliant with the law. So there's certainly we could do. Now, for a non-residential house, it's based upon trip generations. It's based upon how many trips are expected to be generated out of certain type of businesses. So we got a database that you, you enter the type of business, the size of the business, and there is a fee per trip that's associated with that particular type of business. So it does vary with non-residential.
Well, like she was looking for you all to look under the rock, that is a great place to start looking under the rock with the developers and their fees.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So my name's Patty Padell. So what are we doing about the 5% that we don't estimate as far as the tax collections? What do we do to make sure that we do what we can to get those $400,000? So.
Very good question. It rolls over into the following year. And I will tell you, if you look at history, the next year, we may collect 2%, 3%, and over about a five-year period, we'll get that up to like 99.9%. There is a certain small percentage that there will be five phases and liens filed for people who don't pay their taxes, but it just carries over for collection each year.
So eventually, when they sell their house, we hope to get that money?
That's the process.
With some type of interest accumulated to that?
That's correct. Has the interest, yes, ma'am.
Okay, what about the number of employees we have at the city of Noonan? You said the payroll, I think, was 700,000?
305.
305? And I agree with the others, as far as the impact fee, it seems like we could look at that and see what we could do within the law because I know there's a lot of developments going on in the city, and traffic's getting a lot worse for us, the residents, so it'd be good if y'all could look at that and try to cause less taxes for us as residents. I know for me, as the tax assessor, just recently, I reassessed my home, and so now my county taxes are going up $700 or $800, and this on top of it, you know, it's a lot for somebody to swallow all at the same time. That's all I have to say.
We're all in the same situation, everyone else is. So anyone else? All right, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. And I've got just a couple of comments. I want to make sure everyone out there, not only people who are here tonight, but the people who came this morning and then last week, understand that we take this very seriously. We, you saw the chart, over the last 11 of the last 13 years, we reduced your taxes. And we were proud of that when we reduced your taxes. We're not proud that we've got to raise your taxes. It's not helpful when people do that. We understand that. We understand there's pain there, and especially when all three of the taxing entities in the county have to do it in the same year. We are, before we even knew what the millage rate needed to be and we got the assessment, we had already planned a retreat for this fall. It is a local retreat, we're not traveling anywhere to have the retreat. But we're going to have a work session, retreat day, that is a deep dive into our finances, and that's the sole topic of the retreat. So we're going to look at all the fee schedules, we're going to look at the impact fees, we're going to look at everything else that we need to look at to make sure that we are covering what we need to cover to not be in this situation again next year. But the one sure thing is that if we were to take the rollback today, Mr. Phillips, correct me if I'm wrong here, you would have to start next year, you would have to start modeling your budget using that millage rate for next year, is that correct?
Yeah, I modeled the budget, and again, there's a lot of history of conservative budgeting practice, but I modeled it with not being nearly as conservative, knowing what some of those factors were going to be. And I think we're looking at somewhere 2% to 3 and 1/2% potential revenue increase, which in this day with inflation and cost is a negative.
Zero. Yeah, that's. Mr. Thomason, are you on the phone still, I hope?
Yes, I am, mayor.
Do you have any questions? I have not called on you this evening. If you have any questions, this would be an opportunity.
I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for asking.
Sure, thanks. And that's where we are with this. So we are taking to heart what you have told us. We also have a city to operate, and we have a physical responsibility to that city to make sure that we can pay the bills and pay our employees. So at this point in time, if there are any questions from the council, I want to entertain a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Let me just, if I might add just one thing to what you were summarizing there. I think another thing we're looking at is how to possibly have a homestead, additional homestead exemption for property owners in the city of Noonan. So along with everything that the mayor said, we're looking at multiple options that to offset the tax burden, and that's what it is at this particular time. Timing is terrible, but those are things that, in addition to what the mayor said, that we're looking at. So those are encouraging things, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, council? All right, I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance we have before us.
I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance we use in the millage rate as proposed.
Second. Motion to second, we adopt the ordinance that proposed, that is proposed at 3.12 mills. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Thomason, do you have any question?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. No comments, then? I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, and I believe that was a unanimous vote, correct? Okay. Okay, so the motion passes. We appreciate you being here this evening. I don't think there's any other business to come before us. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, we adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomason. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.